Good evening, I would call to order the Village of Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission for our regular Wednesday, February 12th, 2020, meeting. And before we have a roll call, in order to have a quorum, I would like to swear in our new, introduce and swear in our new member, Allison Clemmons. Allison, would you raise your right hand?
No, we don't stand.
And Pete, after me.
Aye.
I'll just do an honor thing, you know.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The laws of DuPage County.
The laws of DuPage County.
The Westmont Village Code, Code of Ordinances.
The Westmont Village Code of Ordinances.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
For the office of Commissioner on the Board of Planning and Zoning.
For the office of Commissioner.
Office of Commissioner. On the Board.
On the Board of Planning and Zoning.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Welcome aboard. Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Sharp. Commissioner Van Buren is here, Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Scales.
Here.
Commissioner Lavoy.
Here.
Commissioner Clemmons.
Here.
And Chairman Carmichael.
Here.
We have a quorum. We have a quorum, and I would just announce that Commissioner Thomas's mother passed away, and this is why he's not Commissioner Sharp, has an illness in the family. If you'd join me, stand in the, join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
While I have everybody standing, anyone and everyone who testifies before this, this board has to be sworn in. So, please raise your right hand, do you swear that any testimony you give shall be the fully truthful, so help you God?
Thank you.
Thank you. Reminder that anyone who testifies must sign in, either at the podium here, we also have another sign-in sheet in the hallway, and please remember to silence your telephones and electronic devices. Next item is the approval of the minutes for the January 8, 2020, meeting. You have a motion to approve.
So moved, Van Buren.
Second, Lavoy.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes, Commissioner Scales.
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy.
Yes.
Commissioner Clemmons.
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael.
Yes. At this point in the meeting, is for the open forum, this is anyone from the community who would like to testify live, on television, on any subject that is not on our published agenda on tonight's meeting. Anyone, complaints? Excellent. Next item, the review of our public hearing procedures. The way this, these meetings go is, the petitioner goes first, be introduced, petition will be identified, and then presented. Next step is the staff will comment on the petition, and then the public will get to ask questions and comment as well. The petitioner, of course, can respond to the public comments and questions. We have the village attorney, Mr. Zemanak, here for, for keeping us on the straight and narrow, as well as our highly competent staff. The next, the next step then is the commissioners' comments and discussions, and finally, commissioners' vote. Once the commissioners' vote, the, the findings go forward to the village board. This, this board is a recommending board only, we do not have final authority. Okay. First item is under Old Business, and it's PZC 19028, request from Community Development Department regarding properties located along East Quincy Street in Westmont, for the following. On our agenda, there are three items, but tonight, we're going to address item A only, we're going to table and continue items B and C. Item A is an amendment to the Village of Westmont land use map of the comprehensive plan along the north side of East Quincy. And so, Johnson, would you like to?
Sure. My name is Nalini Johnson, Village Planner. I want to point you to page eight of the staff report, where we discuss the comprehensive plan amendment. Basically, it is business that has continued from months of research and analysis of this area on the north side of Quincy between Cass and Richmond. And if you look at page nine, we have the existing land uses on the top, that basically show that we have single-family, commercial, industrial, mostly industrial and some utilities. And however, the zoning for these properties is B1, M, and R5, mostly residential. So, the task before you today is to arrive at a consensus as to whether we should change the land use map, the proposed land use map, for the village, which is shown at the bottom of page nine, and modify it to match more closely the existing land uses. So if you switch over to page 10, you will see the proposed land use plan map at the top, which would change the proposed land use plan map from residential to light industrial and business park.
Can I step in and just quibble with one word?
Yes.
In the tax amendment, which we're not considering tonight, the, the word limited manufacturing district is used predominantly. I think light might be used in one place, and I think limited is the word we were using to describe this zoning district, and change that to limited.
The only item before us today is the land use plan.
Yes.
Which has a category called light industrial. So the land use is light industrial, but the zoning will be limited manufacturing when and if that is something that the Planning Commission decides.
So light industrial is already identified in some way in the comp?
Correct.
Okay.
So, I would just point out for clarification for the public and for the commissioners, that it's two different things. We're talking the land use map, not zoning, on this item A. All right? The proposal is change it from residential, single-family residents attached, to light industrial. That's what we're dealing with on item A. So.
If they ask. So basically, the question is whether there is consensus as to the realization that the properties on the north side of Quincy will most probably never convert to residential. And if there is, then we should protect the existing uses by providing for a land use plan that reflects the current uses.
And Nalini, you confirm that there's no text in the comp plan that in any way describes this area, or a sub-area, and states what future development or uses should be? The only way this area is described or addressed at all is in this proposed land use map?
Correct. There is a similar strip along Burlington that is identified as industrial, mixed use, but this particular one, especially going east to Richmond, is not identified in the sub-area plans of the comprehensive plan.
And then, the only other question, preliminary one that I have before you guys all speak, would be, do you think the description of light industrial/business park is confusing at all in light of the zoning category that is being proposed ultimately for this? I understand that's the closest fit of the various proposed uses in the comp plan. Is it worth amending the comp plan to state limited manufacturing, and then, as a potential use area, and then change the map to reflect that?
I see what you mean, because there are category, this category does apply to the regular manufacturing districts as well. So from that point of view, it is similar.
So like, anything that's zoned M, manufacturing, is identified in the comp plan?
Right.
With this?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, I guess that's the least consistent, then.
So it's more of an umbrella term that encompasses all of that?
It seems that you're jumping back and forth between zoning, when you're saying manufacturing.
Right.
And land use, light industrial, and we're addressing land use.
True.
But, but you've clarified that in the comp plan, there is no narrative, no discussion of this, other, of what light industrial is, or?
It describes light industrial, and it does talk about also reflecting Van Industrial, for example, and Ty Warner, so it does point to those areas as well, when it does describe the uses. So, I do recommend that we revisit the comprehensive plan, but at this time, you know, we're looking at a very narrow modification to the comprehensive plan, which is the land use plan map.
And, I agree that we don't need to take this discussion to the entire village, that what we're talking about is East Quincy. Should we, we'd like to open to the public, anyone like to make comments? Sir?
Good evening, everyone. Mark Daniel again, on behalf of IG E, they're located at 100 to 130 East Quincy. As you move down Quincy, you've got bales, and you've got their east storage use, and then IG E are the next three or four pins east of that. IG E's been working to meet with staff, understand what's going on with the text amendment and the map amendment, that's also on the agendas B and C. Under A, the principal concern is what Mr. Zemanak initially opened with. There's a bit of terror that hits when light is used in relation to industrial, when you are in IG E's position. They've been there for 80 odd years. The building was never designed for what most of us consider as light industrial. There are open bays, there's been street loading for 80 years there, the outdoor storage is there, but the process involves what most of us would not ordinarily consider light. Limited, as far as the title of the district goes, is something that we've been working on, but when you see the comprehensive plan move ahead, you wonder if you're taking a step back, because your code's supposed to follow the terms that you enact in the zoning ordinance, I'm sorry, you're in the comprehensive plan. So, you know, I know the uses define it, and you've got regulations in place, but that, that word light industrial is a problem. And everywhere in the proposed amendment, we've always looked at the words very limited. We've got plasma cutting, we've got heavy machinery that they're manufacturing there and shipping off, when it comes to the fans and the different products they sell. So, that is a concern for us. And I suppose, one question I'd have for Nalini is specifically, how is light industrial defined in the comprehensive plan or described? And secondly, how does it apply to the different uses as you work your way down the light industrial/business park district? I think there are two of principal concern, but you also have the vacant park district lot to the east of IG E, and there's, I think, mostly governmental uses as you work away east, except for the outdoor, the Griffin parcel, which is the outdoor landscape business.
I'll, I'll chime in with, with this preliminary comment. If this term is used currently in the comp plan, and applies to every single manufacturing district, and it's a proposed land use plan, meaning the goal is, however it may be defined, light industrial, and I think that's the goal for this strip, right? It's right across from residential, the goal is light, or what we're saying in the zoning ordinance, limited manufacturing. That's not going to, what's stated here isn't going to suddenly take away any rights that you're, that IG E would have, simply by identifying it as such in the comp plan.
I suppose, and I wasn't going to get into anything on the amendment side, but I should have prefaced my comment with, IG E's got this long-term planning process that is involved as a result of what started with the outdoor container issue, and this process last fall. And the, the issue that I've had is that I haven't been able to report to ownership at IG E, and neither has Dean, Dean Keel is here behind me, D-E-A-N-K-E-A-L. Neither of us can report to ownership, that the proposed amendment is a step in the direction of allowing our use, which is a problem. And then we step back, and then they're going to say, well, what happened at the last meeting? Well, they changed their comprehensive plan to allow light industrial. And then I, I give them the answer that you gave. It's the same designation, we're theoretically on the same track, but the only action taken is relating to light industrial, which instinctively causes a reaction, and that's why I'm raising it. It's more a matter of, do you continue to use the terms, is that something you make a note to look at later on? But I am interested in hearing what light industrial contemplates under the comprehensive plan, and that's all I've got on this, this evening.
The comprehensive plan talks about light industrial in terms of existing manufacturing uses in the village, so it does point to the different districts, and talks very generally about that. When we get into the text amendment, you will see definition proposals for different categories of industrial uses. So we have general industrial land uses, intensive industrial land uses, and limited industrial land uses as well. So, the proposal that includes the text amendment will be, and I'll talk to you guys, will be incorporated into the zoning code, and that will become the definition for these different districts.
So it's clear that as you contemplate light industrial by the map use, it includes the existing uses as you work your way behind One Westmont Center, all the way down to the Dennis Grove Township Yard.
Correct.
Mr. Sylvester.
So there's a, a whole lot going on here, and I appreciate the attorneys, but they get real technical real quick, so I'm just going to back this out, and I'm going to focus all my comments on the commissioners. There are a strip of uses along Quincy that have been there for decades. Some years ago, the village came up with a plan of what we, the community, want along there, and that plan said, we want housing. That was the vision. And that got incorporated into the comprehensive plan, and a map, and it shows housing, and that's what's there today. And there's been, there's been discussion internally about, is that reasonable? Or did that idea come to fruition? And the discussion amongst some staff and some property owners is, we understand where that vision came from, and we understand why that map was created, but it didn't work, and let's be real, given the ownership and some of the recent purchasers in that area, including the park district and the township, it's never going to be housing. So let's correct our vision for that area, and let's change the map. And what staff is recommending, and I agree with everything Nalini is saying, is the map for our vision shouldn't say housing, that's what it says today. It should say something more along the lines of what's there, industrial. And then the attorneys get into the discussion of, is it limited, or is it light, and what's the difference, and blah, blah, blah. But I just want you guys to focus on, do you want the plan for that area to say you want housing? And then we'll just leave the plan alone, we don't need to make any changes, and we also don't need to do any zoning revisions. Or, do you agree with staff's perspective, and we're recommending that the vision for that area be changed to, I'm just going to say, industrial? I don't care if it's light, or limited, or whatever. And if you guys agree, then we're encouraging you tonight to vote for an amendment to the land use plan. And all the amendment would do is change it from saying housing, to saying industrial. We think that makes sense. If you vote that way, and if you recommend that the plan be changed, then we go to step two, which in my opinion addresses a lot of the technical things the attorneys are going back and forth about. What uses would be allowed there? Specifically, what kinds of manufacturing activities would be allowed there? I think it's premature to get into that level of detail now, we need to back it up and just look at the big picture. Do you, as representatives of the community, want housing there? Then we leave the map alone. Or do you think that we should just say it's going to be manufacturing, and we need to change the map to reflect that? So I just want you all to be clear that that's really the discussion that we're hoping you'll have now.
Thank you.
We agree with that recommendation, as long as IG E is part of the light industrial classification that's shown on the map for the, the plan. We agree with that recommendation, we're not disputing that it should not be residential.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Keel. Okay, let's move to the commissioners. Oh, one more from staff.
I just want to read into the record, a paragraph in the staff report, so hopefully this will allay some of the concerns. Once the Planning and Zoning Commission agrees to the proposed amendment, the zoning map and related text can be amended by creating a zoning district conducive to the recognizing, sorry, conducive to recognizing the established land uses, discourage expansions of these uses, and encourage compatible land uses in the future. To this end, the M1 limited manufacturing district has been created to accommodate all of the legally existing land uses, in order to remove their non-conforming status and move the area to a more realistic development and redevelopment scenario going forward.
Thank you. Can I say one more thing? Please.
And just by way of background, I'm going to apologize and take responsibility for why this process has been so complicated. In trying to expedite this and move it quickly, we, I, as staff, lumped it all together, and said, let's do a comp plan amendment, and a text, create a new zoning district, and then we'll rezone the whole area, all in one fell swoop. And in hindsight, we should have broken, broken it into pieces, and had the first discussion first, which is what we're doing tonight, what is your vision for that area? And if you tell us it's to have manufacturing along there, then we'll proceed to step two, and we'll come up, and we've already come up, with some suggested zoning rules that you will consider in step two. And if you agree to those zoning rules, then after that, we'll go to step three, and we can rezone that area. So I just want you guys to understand why I think it's taken so long, is because we tried doing it all at once, which is just, as we saw earlier this morning with the attorneys, made it complicated, more complicated than it needed to be. So I just wanted to get that out there.
Let's go to the commissioners. Commissioner Van Buren, what's saying?
I'm sure that this was never intended to in any way restrict what's currently there, or in now, or in the future. It's, it's strictly in my, the way I, it's been represented, to me, is that it, the, it be reflective of what is there now, and what we expect to be in the future. So, I'm all for it. I, I don't want anything that we do, either now or in the future. When we get into the zoning change, I wouldn't want to see it in any way put a burden on the existing manufacturing facility there. And so, I'm, I'm, I would be in favor of going forward with it, as suggested.
Thank you. Commissioner Scales?
I agree with Mr. Van Buren, I echo what he says, so no, no further comments on my end.
Thank you. Commissioner Lavoy?
Yeah, I had the same concerns that Commissioner Van Buren had the last time this came about, that I wanted to make sure that the existing ownership and operations over there aren't, there's no hardship posed to them. I kind of liked it better when it was all together, so we knew what the text is going to say. Somewhere in there, it has to say that the uses are grandfathered in, and there, there may be a non-conforming language in there, but the existing users need to have that protection there. I would have liked to have done it together, but if it has to be done separately, I, I want the zoning to be changed, reflective of what's there now, and I don't have a problem with changing the zoning, and I'm in favor of it, but I just, you know, I really wanted to do it, so we kind of did it all at once, and we knew what was going on. But, I appreciate your comments, but it's something that, hopefully, we can get it done. And, you know, we don't approve this, and that can't, can't come to an agreement on the rest of it, so, but yeah, I am in favor of the zoning change.
Land use.
Okay.
Or changing the map to the, changing the map to the?
Yes, not zoning. Commissioner Clemmons?
I'm also in an agreement with it, it makes sense with how it is now, and moving forward, I do believe that that would be consistent.
Okay, thank you. I have nothing to add as well, and I think we're probably ready to vote on this, and turn it back over to you guys for the, the detail work. So, I, Chair would entertain a motion to, to approve item one, amending the existing and proposed land use maps of the adopted comprehensive plan from 2013. So moved, sir?
Second, Lavoy.
Lavoy? Discussions on, on the item? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes, and Chairman Carmichael?
Yes, I did, yes, okay, thank you. So, next item would be?
Hold on, Mr. Sylvester has a comment.
I'm sorry.
So at the risk of having people throw things at me, I just talked to Nalini, and if people, and I'm mostly looking at the village attorney, if people would want to have some brief discussion about the text amendment, we could try to have that discussion, yeah? Or we can wait and have that discussion next month. I'm just throwing that out there.
Well, we had talked about it ahead of time, and because there's so many moving parts to that text amendment and comments that still need to be reviewed, I think it will muddy the waters more than provide clarity, and I think we'd rather come back next month after, not only I have a chance to, to go over that with staff, but the property owners and their representatives can discuss with staff, and then we can present a cleaner version to you. I think it might be more efficient that way.
Fair enough. Sorry.
Okay. At this point, Chair would entertain a motion to continue items B and C for creating a limited manufacturing district, M1, and to change the zoning map.
And to clarify, that's to continue the public hearing on this.
Correct, to continue the public hearing on B and C.
So moved.
Have a, I have a second. Van Buren?
Second, Lavoy.
Okay. Roll call.
Okay, Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Clemmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes, and Chairman Carmichael?
Commissioner Scales?
Don't forget me.
Sorry, Commissioner Scales.
Yes.
Thank you.
Carmichael votes yes, as well.
Yes, okay.
Because this was published in the newspaper, and the public hearing was open and continued, it will not be published in the newspaper again, it will just appear on the agenda for next month, which is the second Wednesday in March.
11th, I believe.
11th?
Next item, New Business. PZC 200002, a request from Airheart Construction for properties located at 214 West Chicago Avenue in Westmont, regarding the following. A, preliminary plat of consolidation for two lots, the property common addresses are 214 West Chicago Avenue. Mr. Airheart? Welcome.
Hi, my name is Akor Airheart, with Airheart Construction. I'm here to talk about 214 West Chicago Avenue, the preliminary and final plat approval for a lot consolidation plat. Just going to talk a little bit about Airheart Construction, give a little background, talk about some site information, and also our request for the preliminary and final plat approval for the consolidation plat. Airheart Construction, we're a second-generation company. Actually, we built a number of houses in this community 30, 35 years ago, that I laid some sod on. I'm the SOB, I'm the son of the builder, the second-generation guy. We currently have a couple of homes under construction in town right now, on Hudson and Grant Street, and actually getting ready to start some construction on a couple more houses on Trobe. Here this evening to talk about 214 West Chicago Avenue, and the, this property is in an R3 zoning district. It's got a unique situation where my assumption is at some point 30, 40, 50 years ago, the lot, the lots immediately to the north of this lot were sold off by a property owner so that these people could have deeper lots. This is our lot right here and there's a lot behind it. You can see this one actually where it was consolidated. My assumption is that these two lots used to go all the way into the middle and they sold some properties to these people back here, which at that time, that makes a lot of sense. In this day and age, typically you wouldn't want to have a house with two pin numbers. So I, when we looked at this property, I talked to Noriel and said, yeah, let's do a lot consolidation. It made some sense. Basically, the south lot, the lots that is on West Chicago Avenue is 120 feet deep. The lot immediately to the north of it is 60 feet deep. The, if you saw it from the street, you would have no idea. It just looks like a normal situation with a house. You wouldn't have any idea that there's two lots there. Our request for the consolidation, there's no change in zoning. The lot minimum, the lot complies, we, the minimum is 75, 7800 square feet. We're going to be 10,800 square feet. Our lot width complies at 60 feet. There are no variations requested. We're simply requesting preliminary and final plat approval to consolidate these two lots into one property. The, our, we don't have immediate plans, but we plan on building a home there for a customer. This is a site plan that simply shows a ranch plan, about a 1,900 square foot ranch, three bedroom, two bathroom. Might be a house like that. Could be something in this vein as well, maybe a small two-story home. These are just some ideas at this point. But at this point, I'm just simply asking for approval for the preliminary and final plat approval of the lot consolidation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thanks.
Thank you. Staff?
Well, we have had engineering review and they have, we have received letters approving the plat, the preliminary and the final plat as one. So that is very nice.
And usually it's a two-step process in Westmont. You get preliminary plat approval, a recommendation here, approval by the village board. Then you go through final engineering, make sure all the land development or subdivision code requirements are met in your final plat. And then you get final plat approval. But it sounds like this is ready to be combined and for a single approval for both?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. And is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak with the applicant? Okay. We'll take it to the, to the board. Commissioner Scales?
Thank you for giving me the relatively easier one tonight to go first on. And thank you for all of your work in the Village of Westmont. It seems pretty straightforward, makes sense to consolidate here, in my opinion, based on what I've seen. So I have no comments and would be in support of it.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes, thank you for being here. I happen to live in an Airheart home for many years here in Westmont. So I think you're a quality builder.
Thank you.
I do have just a couple of comments and of course, my background comes in here. So it's related to the overall lot. When you look at the, at the plan of survey that you had submitted, I just have a question on where the division of two lots is now. Is there any easement there?
No, there is not any easement. And in fact, as.
Because I can't tell from what I have.
No, there were no easements on this property running through the middle in that area. So there's no power, overhead power lines like running through or anything like that. So there's nothing in that area.
Okay, and then to your new north line, would there be any easements needed there? Or is there one there now because it doesn't show up on the plan?
One of the requirements for any new construction, because a lot of these lots were platted before, we had drainage easements, utility easements and things like that. The engineering department here requires that we actually put easements on the property. So if you look at the plat, we're actually going to be putting a utility easement here and then drainage and utility easements along the side of it. It makes it a lot better for the future for the city in case any issues occur or anything like that. And so that's something that actually, the engineering department here is doing a good job kind of playing catch-up on because a lot of these things just were never done 100 years ago. You wouldn't have had easements like this.
Yeah, I understand it's exactly where I was going because if you put that on there now, it might save another application and application fee later.
Yeah, thank you.
And the last question is, is that if you're going to be required to do stormwater at some point, do you put that easement on that plat now? That way you don't have to come back? Would they require them to come back to do a plat of easement there once they come back for the development?
This.
For the house, you know, the permit of the house?
Because this is, this would just be a one-for-one situation. There'll be no requirement for additional stormwater. Under the DuPage County Stormwater ordinance, if we are creating more than 2,500 square feet of new impervious surface, which we would not be, then we would have to fall under the DuPage County, DuPage County volume control and post-construction best management practices where we would do a dry well or something like that. But in this case, we won't have that much new impervious surface.
So you won't have a need for an easement that you can just put on there now and be done?
Yes.
Okay. I have no further questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Clemens?
Thank you. And I am in agreement, it does make sense to combine the two lots.
Lots are currently both under the same ownership, right?
The lots are currently under the same ownership, but they're separate pin numbers. And so when we, the house isn't completely disrepair and actually the foundation, it's an old CMU foundation. It's been blown in in a couple of areas and the actual interior is great. So when we purchased it, it was in that shape. It's two pin numbers. It's all under ownership and.
Yeah, it's a good idea. And actually, if you're going to build, it's an absolutely necessary. So I'm all for it.
Yeah, I agree. It makes all the sense in the world. I'm sure that the, excuse me, I'm sure that the neighbors on the east and west on those newer homes will appreciate your work also.
This is more of an aside, but ComEd has come out with a new requirement that the village is not bound to follow, where they want their utility easements in the front yard so they can easily access them. In Westmont, we require them on the side and rear yards. But it would be optional if a owner developer wanted to put a front yard easement. Engineering could consider that for purposes of laying a utility line. If you don't, which is fine, any electrical lines that would have to be buried by Westmont rules have to be in conduit.
This is actually, I've been involved with some stuff with the State Home Builder Association, local home builder association, that's in.
Northern Illinois?
Northern Illinois and then also the state. That's in continuing discussion right now. It's just, I was just, I was involved with a couple of emails today. You know Rich Gerard?
I know the name, yeah.
Okay, yeah. So it's, because that's a very unique thing for development because we have all of our utilities in the front, the sewer, the water, the gas. And to throw electric in the front is a bad idea because electric is always within frost line depth. And so if you're doing any sewer water work and you've got emergency work during the winter time and you're coming in the front yard, you're going to be ripping out electric because it's impossible not to because it's going to be in the frost. So it'll be an interesting thing that happens, see what ends up happening with that.
Well, the way it's worded, it's not mandatory. They claim it's mandatory, but they haven't accepted, a carve-out where if the municipality doesn't allow it, then you can put it in the rear yard. You just have to put it in conduit.
Yeah, yeah.
Which you probably do anyhow.
Actually don't right now, but I hope we don't. It's an interesting discussion.
Any further comments by commissioners? And Chair would entertain a motion to approve PZC 20002, the preliminary plat of consolidation, two lots at 214 West Chicago.
So move, Lavoy?
Second, Clemens.
I have a motion, a second discussion on the item. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Clemens?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael.
Yes. Okay, sir, you have a recommendation for approval. But remember, we're only in a recommending body. So staff will notify you when.
Great. Thank you very much. Y'all have a great evening. Appreciate you being here.
At this point, I'd like to switch two items. Let's take item four first and we'll take item three last. PZC 2004, request from Lexica redevelopment regarding properties located at nine and 11 West Quincy Street for the following. A parking variance. Mr. Loggambina? Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Frank Loggambina, along with my partner, Chris Sarnowski. We are both involved with Lexica Development. We develop in-need properties in the area. And I think we can all agree, 11 West Quincy has been in need for the better part of a decade. We recently acquired the property. We actually just closed on it on Friday. So it is our property now. We are looking to develop the property and have apartments on the second floor and have retail restaurant uses on the ground floor. Part of that is in the back of the property, as you'll see on your plat there, we've got a postage stamp-sized lot in the back that is available for parking. We can comfortably fit about five spots back there and have availability for, you know, trash containers and enclosure for the trash bins and grease trap for the restaurant. What that means is we'd need a variance on the remainder of the parking. We were planning on allowing spaces back there for, one space for each of the four units upstairs in the building, having a space available for the restaurant tenant on the ground floor and using the, obviously the restaurant's busy when the, everybody's coming home from work. So the metro parking lot will start vacating at that time. And, you know, it's a complimentary use to, you know, to the downtown area. The parking lot starts clearing out as people start coming in to eat at the restaurant. So that's what we're looking to do. And we go over the numbers here real quick. Total, we have 46 spaces that we need, going through all the calculations that the code has set out for us. We're able to provide five in the back. Therefore, we're seeking a variance on 41 spaces. In addition to that, we're seeking a variance on the landscaping requirement in the back. To put landscaping in the back would require us to have to eliminate additional parking spaces, which would just increase the requirement for us to have more parking spaces elsewhere. So ask if you guys have any questions for me?
Okay, thank you. Staff? Sir?
So especially for our two newer members, I just want to make clear this is a request for a variance. In layman's terms, a variance is when someone says they want to do something, but they can't meet all the rules. And so the state requires us to make sure that certain criteria are met before we let someone do something that doesn't meet our rules. And I'm going to call your attention to the staff report. There's, or the packet, there's a page called Addendum, responses to findings of facts for variations. And then the attorney also handed one out. And we're not going to go through these in detail now, but as you are ever now and in the future requested to consider a request for a variance, keep in mind that we are obligated to find some determination that these criteria are met. And I'm just going to go through them quickly. One, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations of the district. So we need to be comfortable that that is true. Also, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. If we're going to grant a variance and say they can do something that doesn't meet our rules, we need to be satisfied that that is also true. And third, for any variance, including this one, the variance or the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. So as you consider this request, keep those questions in mind. The applicant has provided their thoughts on whether those criteria are met. Staff believes that those criteria are met. I believe the village attorney has put together something as well. I just want to call that to your attention. The only other thing I'm going to say is any use of this building, any use would require a variance. There's four apartments on the upper level. Each apartment requires two parking spaces. So right there, you need eight. And that's just to use the second floor. Any use on the first floor, whether it's a store, an office, a medical clinic, a restaurant, a retailer, anything is going to need a variance. So it's my own opinion, they're not asking for anything that anyone wouldn't want or need to put that building to productive use.
And Bruce, if I could chime in further. This is a common theme in the central business district where buildings are built to zero lot lines for the most part, with no side yard setbacks, front yard setbacks, very limited rear yard setbacks. There's just not room on these downtown properties to provide the necessary off-street parking. But that's why we have public parking lots on street parking. As the applicant pointed out, the commuter lot empties out in the evening time and that's available for public parking or some of, I guess, guest parking if someone visits these apartments. So variances have been routinely granted for downtown businesses to promote development. And for this particular property, when the building was constructed originally, the proposed use on the first floor was kind of a nightclub entertainment-type use where bands and theater productions were going to take place with residential on the second floor. And a variance was granted previously for that use. However, because they never built out the property, the variance was never quote, unquote exercised. And so it expired after 12 months. So now they have to re-request the parking variance.
Okay, and just another reminder to the board that our vote on the variance does include a vote on the findings of fact that Mr. Sylvester just went over. So let's take it to the commissioners.
Actually, you want to go to public first?
I apologize. I thought we did. Anyone from the public like to comment on this, question the petitioner? Okay. Thank you. Now we will go to the commissioners and let's start with Commissioner Clemens.
With this, I do have the question of the fee in lieu of parking stalls. And so what, can you explain what that is?
Staff can certainly. It's a good question. I'm glad you brought it up. The village has a rule that in the downtown, if a business wants to move in and they can't provide enough parking and so they need a variance, we make them provide money that goes into a dedicated fund. And the village uses that fund as it grows over time through these variances and the money that's put into it to buy property and create surface parking lot in the downtown or to, you know, renovate or maintain existing municipal parking lots. So right across the north side of the tracks on the east side is a small parking lot that the village owns. Money that they'll be required to pay in lieu of or instead of providing parking could go to maintain that lot or to buy other land for additional parking in the future. So the fee in lieu of or instead of providing their own parking is used for the village to provide parking in the downtown.
Okay. Well, in light of that and with prior, that it was approved before for a variance and also we have the lots that do clear out in the evening in providing parking, to me, I'd be in agreement with that.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Van Buren?
Was, when this was requested before and it was never built out, but I think that we were real concerned about sound and so on because of the nature of the entertainment that was going to take place. Was anything ever built to accommodate that?
No, because they didn't, they just built the shell and that was it.
Just a shell. Okay, okay. No, I, I have full agreement with the variance. It's the only way that we can operate, so.
Sure. No problem. Commissioner Scales?
It makes sense to me, so I'm in support of it.
Okay. Commissioner Lavoy?
I agree with the findings of fact. It's the right thing to do. The only question I would have is the type of restaurant. If it's a breakfast restaurant, that parking lot's full and all the spaces are full. You didn't mention what type of restaurant it would be, what the hours would be.
It's going to be evening, it's, yeah, PM. It's a Italian.
Yeah, the other thing too, I just had a question for staff. Didn't we grant some sort of variation to?
Didn't we grant some sort of variation to the Holiday property for something very similar during their, their presentation?
I believe, yes, that was before my time, but I think the Holiday project was approved and it provides less parking than our ordinances would require. I think they did get a variance.
That was because they, they have a car rental service on-site and it's to encourage fewer cars because it's transit-oriented development.
Right. And so we, we granted that as part of that development, and the parking out front is going to change because the, the building on the corner is going to go under construction, so, but yeah, I'm very supportive and welcome.
Okay, thank you.
No further questions.
Would the restaurant be on the west side, number 11, or on the east side?
It's going to be directly adjacent to the Holiday development.
Okay. And is there a basement in that, in the building?
There's not really a basement. It's more of a, a small little room. It's, the only thing that's in there is where the water line comes in at a building. That, it's a 12 by 12 little, little room just where the water comes into the building.
Would that be suitable for storage?
Not really.
Okay. And I would mention that Mr. Fleck from Dolce Restaurant was here this evening and had to leave, and he, he asked me to tell you that he welcomes, the competition welcomes another restaurant there and he, he supports this. And so do I. So the, the chair is prepared to, or a motion to approve this request from Lexica Redevelopment regarding the properties at nine and 11 West Quincy for the parking variance.
So move, Van Buren?
Second, Lavoy.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Clemmons?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael?
Yes. Well, there you go, sir. You have a recommendation, and again, the staff will notify you when you can go before the village board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck. Next item. Planning on zoning 20-003, I'm sorry, a request from the Community Development Department regarding the following. A zoning text amendment to Appendix A, Article 14, Definitions, to clarify existing definitions and provide additional definitions. Ms. Johnson?
Hi, Commissioners. Want to point you to staff report for agenda item number three that talks about exactly what you stated, creating definitions that we do not currently have in the zoning code, specifically for the zoning code. So we are not creating definitions for bulk, we're creating definitions for land uses more than anything. And this is a precursor to taking a look at the categories in our zoning code for residential, for business, for commercial, you know, for the different uses that we have, and eventually fleshing those out as well. So this is step one. It is not comprehensive. We're basically adding definitions that we do not have, and they will help us do our job on a day-to-day basis so that we can help people figure out if they can do something or not and define what it is that they're doing. So I really do not want to go through each one individually because it's quite long. The document is about 20 pages, and it was handed out ahead of time, so if you have any questions about each of these or any of these, let me know. The underlines mean, I'll just go through the formatting. You'll notice strikeouts, you'll notice underlines, and then there also is text that is plain text. And the text that is untouched is basically what is in our code right now. The text that is, has the strike-through is proposed to be removed, and then the text that is underlined is the additional text that we're adding to the definitions list.
Question for council, is it, have you answered, are these legal terms? Is that, and there's not an issue of the specific legality of the definition of?
Generally, no. What you want is a term that is easily understandable and reflects common usage. So we've got some terms related to, let's say, automobile laundries, which isn't defined, and the public may look at that and say, what the hell, what the heck's an automobile laundry? You know, so we're kind of changing that to car wash. So, so it's things like that where it's more common sense. There are a few terms in there where I have the exact same question. I can get to those eventually, like, for example, there's children home in there. I, I've got a few questions and maybe, I don't know if I should, we should sit down offline and go through some of these because I think it's going to take a lot of time. Since I got this report, I've started making my way through it, and I do have a number of questions. And I just don't know how much time you want to take up going through the definitions tonight or if you want to get it started and, and then continue this at, at another meeting.
I'm open to either option. I think it, it depends on the will of the commi, the commissioners, really.
Well, speaking for the board, I think that we're not going to get into the specifics on these things the way you and, and John are, so I, I think you'd probably better handle this out outside, outside of class and, and bring it back.
Yeah, that should have been done before we're here, if there was any, any question on, on whether any of this met our legal requirement. But I think too that it's best that these be hashed out before there, we, we vote on it.
And that's my fault for not looking at this until the first time over the weekend in advance, and I know Nolini was really busy and obviously a lot of work in a relatively short period of time has gone into this because it's really comprehensive and in general needed for sure because our terminology is either out of date or not defined at all. So I think this will be helpful, but I do want to have a discussion about some of the items. For example, adult uses are crossed out, but it is something that legally we have to provide for in some district, and we do in the manufacturing district. So, you know, things like that I have questions about, but maybe we can talk offline and then bring it back at the, the next meeting.
Any other commissioners wish to speak on this?
Yeah, I too, like John did, was going through it, and there's little details that, that come out in the definitions. For example, elsewhere, other communities, there's been difficulties with, you know, current, current applications that, that are, are related to the animal care facility, if it's boarding or not boarding, and, you know, how, how those facilities get really challenging if they're in a residential area or board a residential property, and the word boarding is in that definition. And so as you go through, there's little things that crop up at, at you that, that needs refinement, and I think it'd be a good thing if it gets flushed out.
Now, if they're all classified as special uses, all of these animal care facilities, then that would come out during a presentation because they'd need a special use anyhow. So maybe that distinction isn't as important, but that's a great question. That's the sort of stuff.
That's the sort of thing. I'm using that as an example going through that, you know, maybe needs some more discussion.
Okay. Comment by Economic Development?
I guess a request for the commissioners, as you look through that list, and if you have specific things that you're aware of or have heard about, if you can just send staff, Nolini and me an email and say, hey, you know, boarding needs some attention or whatever, that's, that would be very helpful. And then we'll certainly sit down with John and, and talk about some of the specifics.
Okay.
And I also want to kind of reiterate the idea that these definitions are not regulations, they're just definitions. So I think some of the issues that we have with the zoning code is that it, the definitions pull in regulations, you know, only from seven to 10 or PM or whatever it might be. So we're trying to parse all of that out and just strictly keep to a definition of a particular use.
Well, what, my point though is on this, that particular example that I raised, is that if it's defined that way as, you know, the animal, animal care facility is defined that way, then it could be assumed that a variation, that would be part of a variation, so automatically you would have boarding, boarding. So all of a sudden, that falls under that criteria that if I get a variation for an animal facility, it includes boarding, period.
And also, a tool that I like using is includes boarding or excludes boarding or, you know, that kind of thing.
Right, right.
So anything that we, it, it is a little regulatory, but it's still within the definitions.
Right, exactly.
And what you'd have to do is then flip to, let's say, the B2 district where we have, you know, animal care facilities, however they're listed now, and say, okay, do we regulate that as permitted use or special use? Again, if they're all special uses, then if there's boarding, we can pay special attention to that, see if it has a unique impact on surrounding properties, et cetera. If it doesn't, if it's otherwise a permitted use, I share your concern, and we might want to break out animal care facilities with boarding, animal care facilities without boarding.
But that's just one example, like you were saying, John. It's, it's something that there's a lot of things that could come up here that, definitions, that lend itself to some conflicts later that we might need some clarity on.
But I also want to add one more thing. There is a danger when going through these things of something called analysis paralysis, where we like really get into the weeds and never leave. So, you know, I think one thing we talk about with, at the staff level is that we want to just create these definitions, have them work for us, and as we go, we can tweak and change and, you know, continue to do that.
But isn't the goal also, once the definitions are in place, to go back to all of the use lists in the districts? And if we define something as an automobile laundry, then we're going to change that to car wash, so it matches the definitions more understandably.
Right. And another thing that I will be doing is looking at all of those use tables and trying to pull in anything that may be missing. So maybe I'll take that time as well over this next month to see if we have anything that may be missing.
It's a good exercise to periodically review the use lists in all the districts and see if they need updated.
Chair would entertain a motion to continue, PCC 20-003, request from the Community Development for a zoning text amendment, Appendix A, Article 14, Definitions.
And that would include a, the motion would include continuing the public hearing so that no new publications needed.
And to continue the public hearing as well. Have a motion.
So move, Clemmons?
Second?
Second, Lavoy.
Lavoy, I have a motion, a second. Further discussion? Roll call.
Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Clemmons?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael?
Yes. Okay. Back, back to work at the table. That's it for the agenda items miscellaneous. Any commissioners have?
I have a question. The three-story apartment building that we had approved going right across the street from where we are, is that, and it has a stoppage on it?
That is a complex project. The owner is not communicating with us. This is purely speculation, but I wonder if, if he's run into some challenges. I don't know any of the details. Yeah, we're trying to get in touch with them pretty soon. We've got a rule that if, if activity isn't continuous or if it's stopped for a certain amount of time, then we can intervene, and I checked with the building commissioner, and we're coming up on that deadline soon where we can be a little more forcible about saying, hey, we need to see some progress on that. It's been in its current state for several months.
I know.
But we have to wait a little longer before we can take the next step and try to compel them to do something.
Good. Thank you. I was, I was asked about that also by someone. Friday is Valentine's Day. You married guys, don't forget. Anything else?
On my way home.
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah. I'll just make comment on behalf of the board. I think we all share sentiments to Commissioner Thomas with his loss. We extend our condolences and we support you and your family at this time.
Excellent. Thank you. All in favor of adjournment, raise your hand.
If you need a motion?
I thought we had a motion. Motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second, Clemmons.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.